April eighth, twenty twenty four, City of Twalton City Council Meeting. I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Our first item on the agenda is a Pledge of Allegiance tonight led by Council President Pratt. All right, that brings us to announcements, and as long as it stays up. Item number one is the Twalton YAC Annual Report and the National League of Cities Recap. Welcome. Good to see you ladies again.
Good evening, Mayor Brubinick and members of the council. My name is Elliot Grover.
I'm Lucy Austin.
I'm Debbie Kelly.
And I'm Brooke Gillette.
And we are here to present the yearly YAC report. Our mission statement is that we work to improve the lives of youth by building relationships, advocating for diverse needs, and providing link from youth to government. Our current members are Lucy, Olivia, Debbie, Brooke, Elliot, Ava, Simon, Cosma, McKenna, and Oliver, and that is an included image of a couple of us. And to achieve our goals, we incorporate advocacy activities and education to the events we plan and participate in.
Okay, so through our advocacy part, we recently implemented a youth survey that was directed towards high schoolers at Twalton High School. And then here are some results from that survey. This question is about what the youth were, what they felt were the most important issues that were impacting them directly. And as you can see, drugs and alcohol and mental health were the clear winners here with seventy-four percent and sixty-five percent. We also chose to focus on mental health because there were a lot of groups at our school dedicated to the prevention of drugs and alcohol.
And for activities, YAC members volunteer at city events, including concerts in the park, Viva Twalton, the West Coast Giant Pumpkin Regatta, and the Blender Dash. In the bottom left corner is us at our winter party. We had a gingerbread contest. In the picture is me, Lucy, and Simon. And in the top right corner is Ava and one of our current and not so current members. And then with education, Oregon, we go to the Oregon Youth Summit and the National League of Conferences. Speaking of the summit.
Yeah, so at the Oregon Youth Summit, we got to hear from the Oregon Kid Governor, who had some really great insights for her age. We also had really great discussions on mental health and how youth mental health is very big issue right now, and there's a lot of resources out there. And we also talked and networked with other youth councils in our area.
Now, this is us at the NLC one hundred, the Congressional City Conference out in Washington DC. I'm with Debbie and Lucy here and with mayor and councillor. So thank you so much for taking your time out of your day and taking a picture with us. I know we got to see Joe Biden as well speak, and it was very insightful to hear. Some highlights that we experienced in DC, we networked with other youth councils around the country, sessions on political polarization, civil discourse, and youth advisory. We also learned about the issues and projects other mental health, other youth councils are addressing, so that was very insightful. I know it was really insightful to hear all the diverse topics that people were experiencing.
And some more highlights, we visited the Holocaust Museum and the National Botanic Garden. We toured the National Mall and heard from speakers, including President Joe Biden, Presidential historian Doris Kearns Goodwin, and Transportation Secretary Pete Buttigieg.
And then some recommendations and takeaways that we got from NLC. We definitely learned more about the ways that we can encourage open discourse and prevent political polarization, specifically in our own community. And we want to continue to focus efforts on youth mental health from that.
And finally, we thank you for funding this, and we really are excited to bring back everything that we learned from Washington DC here back in Twalton.
All right, great. Questions for the YAC members? Councilbrooks.
I just had a conversation in the hall. Can you tell us about your, show your sweatshirts and tell us about your insignia?
So our sweatshirts were designed by Simon Phipps in the front and Cosma for the back. It includes a tiny fun picture of a yak and on the back, a nice design with our symbol and name.
Thank you. Sorry, I was a couple minutes late. I was out there yakking about the yak.
Other questions or comments? Councilsaco.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation, and I just want to take a moment to say thank you for your service to our community. There's so many things that you could spend your time doing, and to serve the community is amazing. And I just really appreciate all the work that you do. There's so much that go on at the high school that we would never know about, and so your voices are so important in this community. So using your voices, speaking up, and using your time in this way is just really amazing. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Hillier.
And to add on to that, you've also missed school time, right? And so we know that you're not only representing yourselves, your family, your community, but your school and your schoolwork. And I just wanted to say an extra thank you for the hard work that you're putting in. And I know that there are support systems that sit behind you or stand behind you or next to you, and I'd like to thank them for sharing you with us and for this opportunity to be here tonight to share it with you.
Thank you.
It was really nice to see you in Washington, and I think that was the mayor and I highlight. Unfortunately, we didn't get to see you in the arguments in front of the faux city council, but Debbie, you gave me a great summary of what you talked about, and I believed you, and I know you guys won your argument. Thank you for just going and representing our city. We're really proud of you.
I just got one question. What's one thing from each of you you're not going to forget about DC when you were there?
I think the diversity was very insightful. I was, I think I came in with like a very select idea of what I was going to see, but I just saw a lot of different ideas, and I think that, I guess, gave me a lot of hope for our teens going forward.
For me, it was definitely an eye-opener to see like all the problems from different cities and states, because like just being in only Oregon, you only see Oregon's problems. So it was really interesting to see like Kentucky's problems and like their cities, what they are struggling to deal with and what they've already solved and met. So it was really interesting.
Yeah, I definitely second that. It was really cool to like expand my horizons and views, and it was really interesting to talk with other people on their different perspectives and their different problems and how they address them differently maybe than we do.
Cool, all right. Well, thank you for, that was terrific answers.
I didn't attend the conference, unfortunately.
But yeah, I very much appreciate you guys taking time out from school and going. It was a pretty rushed conference, a lot of things thrown at us. It was kind of cool for politicos, it was kind of silly to, you know, see President Biden and Pete Buttigieg. You guys didn't even mention those two guys, politics. But it's more important for you guys to network with your peers from across the country. That's the goal, and to learn from each other. So I hope you very much enjoyed it there and that you pass on for the next year whoever might represent the YAC how much you enjoyed it. But thanks for coming out tonight. Thanks for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number two in our announcements is a new employee introduction.
Good evening, council, mayor. My name is Courtney Cameron, and I'm the court administrator here in Twalton, and I have the pleasure to introduce you to the newest member of our finance department, Selene Montez. Selene is our new court clerk, and she started with us on March eleventh. She comes to us from the Department of Justice in the Child Support Division, and prior to that, she was a bilingual secretary for Fowler Middle School. So she comes to us with lots of experience, customer service, handling some people who are not necessarily happy. So she has really good skills and background, and when she's not here at work, she enjoys reading and singing and spending time with her nephews and nieces. And I know you join me in welcoming her.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Anything you'd like to say? Introduce yourself, tell a joke, sing, dance? No. Thank you for joining the team. Yeah, you're going to see, you know, sometimes, especially in court, people who are very stressed and be able to deal with that as a special skill, and I very much appreciate you, especially if coming from your background, that'd be terrific to have you, you know, help people out on a tough day, you know, when they're thinking, you know, that, you know, they're worried about what's going to happen in court and stuff like that, that you make it, you know, a little bit more comfortable for them. I very much appreciate that. Anything else? Well, thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Have a terrific evening. All right, that brings me up, well, all of us, for item number three. You can see the poster behind us. The State of the City will be held on May second from seven thirty to nine, so it's a breakfast event. It's a free breakfast. We're not like a certain city that's charging twenty-five dollars for their lunch. But it's going to be breakfast burritos, three different kinds of burritos, and there's vegan options, all kinds of good stuff. What you're going to see is not just myself standing at a podium droning on, it's the whole city council in a very exciting kind of format. We're going to have, again, Eric Schmidt will be back to do the emceeing of the event. So I encourage you to come to the Marquee, you know, the community center. Get there early so you can get as many burritos as you can pile on and listen to what, you know, what the city has accomplished this past year and what we envision coming up. We've had a terrific past year, and with our recent city council advance, we've got a lot of priorities for the next couple of years that we want to get completed. So it's going to be an exciting time to be here in Twalton. And again, May second, seven thirty to nine, Twalton Marquee Community Center. Then I saw an email go out, they're asking people RSVP by mid-April. I got an email today. April fifteenth. You don't have to RSVP, we just want to make sure you have a head count. You can always drop in and enjoy the event along with the rest of us. Item number three is, you can see I'm wearing purple tonight. April is the month of the military child. This is in a effort led by the Department of Defense to recognize children of military families. A lot of folks don't realize that it's very difficult. In addition to be, your regular stresses of being a child, to be a military child, where you're maybe moving from school to school every two, four, six years, so you really never have a set core of friends, you're moving all the time, or one of your parents gets deployed for a year. And so you lose contact with that parent, you know, ideally you might get some FaceTime or something like that, but not, not all these kids can get that. So this month, we just want to keep in mind those children of military families. So on Thursday, April eleventh, we're asking people to wear purple, fly purple, put purple flags. What do we want to do in purple? Just to show these kids that we do care about their families. We have, the stats I have is in twenty twenty-two, there are eight thousand seven hundred and sixty-two National Guard members in Oregon, which includes fifty, five thousand one hundred and eighty-four Army Guard and two thousand one hundred and eighty-seven Air Guard members. And remember back in the old days, you didn't have to worry much about being deployed when you're in the National Guard or Reserve, but you do now. And some, most of these deployments are for a year, so it's really tough on the kids and the family members. So please, if you remember on Thursday, April eleventh, to wear purple, to let those folks know we do care about them, we think about them, and do very much appreciate, you know, them supporting their parents that are in the military. Thank you. And that brings us to public comment. Public comment is an opportunity to address the city council on an item that is not on the agenda tonight. Please keep your comments to about three minutes. If there's anyone in Zoom, I'll take those folks first to address the council. After that, we'll take folks who are in person. Do we have anyone in Zoom, Nicole? Okay, I think, is Patricia part of the CIO group? I know Patricia is involved with CIOs, but, okay. She's not raising her hand? All right. So I do have two people signed up. You don't have to be signed up after these two folks, they're coming up together. So Danny and Victoria, welcome.
Good evening, city council members. My name is Victoria Fisk. I live in Twalton. I serve as Secretary to the IBAC Community Involvement Organization. I was nominated to act as spokesperson on behalf of the CIO Leadership Group. We wish to begin a conversation about the complexities of liability insurance coverage. On April third, the CIO Leadership Group met to discuss business related to budget and community events, specifically the requirements for liability insurance for community fairs and other free community events hosted by individual CIOs. During that meeting, the CIO Leadership Group was informed that the city's insurance provider does not cover the CIO program. The city is self-insuring the two currently planned community fair, community fairs that are the IBAC Byram Combined Fair on June twenty-ninth at IBAC Park and the River Park Community Fair on June first at Jergens Park. So in July, a significant financial burden and legal obstacle will be permanently placed on individual CIOs unless we do something different. Without liability insurance, the CIOs will be unable to realistically host community events and will be significantly hindered in community involvement and growth goals. Tremendous effort has been required to reach the current level of momentum in building these events, and any gap in hosting these events will put the community involvement back significantly. The momentum created from the last three years of dedication and hard work will be lost, and the goals for community involvement will be pushed years further out. Some CIOs have been investigating options for event-based liability insurance coverage, and it's evident that the CIOs might not be able to procure liability insurance without restructuring. Several options were discussed, and most were unviable due to many barriers, ranging from legal structure and setup of the CIOs to the willingness of insurers to provide coverage for unincorporated, unincorporated entities. One path was left on the table for development. The option is either to form a CIO group nonprofit, specifically the five oh one C three, in order to meet the requirements to procure liability insurance, or to participate as a branch of an already established nonprofit organization. Unfortunately, the timing is a bit tricky. The city is currently entering its budgeting cycle, and the CIO Leadership Group is in discovery on how much the liability insurance will cost. At this time, we are hoping to flag the budgetary requirement, and at the May thirteenth Budget Committee meeting, we are hoping to present additional specifics on the cost of liability insurance for the CIO group. Between now and then, the CIO Leadership Group will be consulting with legal experts and insurance providers, as well as receiving advice from other groups that have already procured the five oh one C three status to fully understand the process and the legal complexities that liability insurance and public safety require to continue to grow our community involvement through free public events. We know that the Twalton City Council shares our desire and commitment to continued engagement with Twalton's residents and to increasing community involvement through CIO meetings and free community events. We all want Twalton residents and businesses to feel included in our community. In order to continue to achieve these shared goals, it is vital that the council understands that the current funding level is not sufficient to meet the additional expense related to inflation and liability insurance requirements. Thank you for your consideration. We look forward to working with you all on this important community issue.
I'm Danny O'Neill. I'm with the Byram CIO as their land use officer. I want to thank personally Victoria for what she put together. It was quite a task. She had lots of input, and I mean lots of input from all of the CIOs. I was very impressed with what she put together. I hope you guys understand our concern, not only as the CIO, but as parts of the community and the people that we want to bring in and support. And we want to do that, but we need to do it not only safely, but making sure that everybody that is involved in it is protected. And that's not just us, that's the city itself too, plus the people that attend at different events. I enjoy living in the city. I've been here since nineteen ninety-five, and I wasn't aware that there were CIOs until I attended one of the presentations for a new development and found out what was going on. And I volunteered my services. Being ex-military, I, no stranger to volunteering. So thank you. I hope you guys understand the importance of what the CIOs are trying to do to be responsible. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the city council this evening? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on in the agenda. Next item up is the consent agenda. These items are considered routine, they will be adopted by one motion unless someone in the council would like to pull from the agenda and heard separately later tonight. Tonight, the consent agenda consists of five items. Item number one, consideration of approval of the work session and regular meeting minutes of March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four. Item number two, consideration of approval of a new liquor license application for the Headliners Club. Item number three, consideration of resolution number fifty-seven sixty-four dash twenty-four, awarding a contract for water meter reading services. Item number four, consideration of resolution number fifty-seven sixty-five dash twenty-four, awarding the contract for commission of public art at Veterans Plaza. And finally, item number five, consideration of resolution number fifty-seven sixty-six dash twenty-four, awarding a contract for Kia Cuts Bridge Rehab. Any questions on the consent agenda?
I don't have a question.
I move that we adopt the consent agenda as read. Second?
I have a motion as second to adopt the consent agenda as read. Any questions or deliberations on those motions? All of the favors say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Any abstentions? It's unanimous. All right, that brings us to special reports. Our first special report is our outside agency grant awardee Meals on Wheels People. Welcome. You guys are color coordinated and everything.
Yeah. We totally talked about this before we got here. Hello, my name is Bea, pronouncer she/her. I am the grants manager at Meals on Wheels People. I'm also the EDI chair, and I'll let my colleague introduce herself.
I'm Angie Boyd, and I am the program manager at the Beaverton Center, and I also oversee the Twalton Center, Juanita Poole.
Yes, so we will have a, we thank you for your grant award to our program, which is why we're here. So I'll just give an overview of Meals on Wheels People and then some little bit more specifics about what happens at the Twalton Center. With Meals on Wheels, a lot of people know it, or they know some parts of the program, or just, you know, maybe you don't. I guess I shouldn't make that assumption. I do assume everyone knows, but maybe not. So our vision is no seniors will experience hunger or social isolation, and our mission is to reach the seniors and assist them with maintaining independence, providing nutritious food, human connection, and social support. We also use our expertise and capacity to serve other nutritionally at risk populations. With that, besides our traditional senior meal home delivery program, we also have Meals for Kids, for instance, which is modeled after our traditional home delivery program. With that one, it's more of an intergenerational approach. So we serve families with children of age zero to eighteen, and with that, they typically more less, more so like to receive the raw foods, and so that they can cook at home and have, you know, more authentic or culturally specific foods that are enjoyed by their families, but also it gives them a chance to cook, and they don't necessarily have to worry about where their next meal is going to come from. Another program we have is our medically tailored meals. With that one, it's available for all ages, and it's folks who are being discharged from the hospital who identify as food insecure, and typically folks who have some sort of chronic illness. So we have some meals, and all of our meals have been tailored to medically tailored meals at this point, because it's kind of just easier, but also it provides a way that we are meeting those needs for even more folks. Our story, so lots of folks may know us by many different names. We got our start in nineteen seventy, that's when we were incorporated by these two lovely ladies. I like to include this picture because our social media person was very excited when she found all three folks, as you can imagine, it was not the easiest to find these nice old ladies from nineteen seventy, and we were able to track it down in this lovely picture of them, of those folks getting started. So it was just basically them seeking, seeing that need and doing something about it. So they literally delivered meals on paper plates covered in foil. We don't do that anymore. There are regulations, but that's how we got our start, and from there, we have grown to become the entity that is known as Meals on Wheels People. So we serve the Portland-Vancouver area, so we have Multnomah, Washington, and Clark County, which is up in Washington. Our services are, our older adult meals are for folks that are sixty years or older. We do not, we do not turn anyone, we do not turn anyone away. We gladly accept contributions, I have to say. Like, development team requires me to say that. But we do, we offer meals so that we've never had to have a waitlist in our fifty-plus years for the older adults program. We have no intention of doing that to this day. So yes, we serve across those three counties. This last fiscal year, we served over a million meals, and that's across all programs and more than ten thousand individuals. We were able, we managed to serve and touch those lives. Right now, in our central kitchen, our central kitchen is in Multnomah Village. It's a feat to look at, and then they're like literally like stirring the cauldron type thing. They prepare about six thousand meals per day. We have had, at one point, we're doing up to eight thousand, nine thousand meals in the, in the before time, in the dark times, we don't talk about those. But now we've kind of leveled out, and we do about six thousand meals at our current location. We are in the middle of a capital campaign, so we are branching out. We're going to be on the east side of Multnomah County, so we have a building in construction on eighty-second. So some, these are some of our, as I talked about, those expertise, some of our other programs that people might not know about. We have our Friendly Chat Wellness Calls, which is literally giving our participants a call and just chatting with them. Some folks, they will do the same folks every week and what have you, and some, they just pick, kind of pick up the slack and just call whomever. It's something our CEO loves to do of just calling, who needs to, who needs to call this week, and just chatting about them with whatever, whatever fits. We have a pet program with that. A lot of times when those emergency situations happen, people don't really know what to do with their pets or don't have a plan for their pets. So we do, we do emergency kits, but we also provide pet food for, for folks' pets. It's a, it's an all-inclusive service. I talked about Meals for Kids, medically tailored meals, and then in Vancouver, we have a diner, and if you haven't gone, you should. I know it's, might be a bit of a drive, but it's really worth it. It was an initiative that was taken on that has been really successful. It gives folks a chance to eat with their families. They don't have to, you know, necessarily have just what is that standard meal. They choose from the menu, menu of items. It's good. I think we have all gone there at some point and like truly rave about the food. It's an experience. Some folks, they, they kind of treat it like the congregate, where they go every Wednesday or whatnot, they have their table, that's their thing, that's what they do. Diner is very cool. A lot of our services, we do have, of course, have staff, but a lot of our services are volunteer-powered, and we love that. That is a part of our mission. I think, I forget the percentage, but the majority of our volunteers are actually over the age of seventy, which is kind of, it's just cynical, that's just a school statistic, it means nothing, but it's just really awesome that it's folks utilizing the service on both ends. And then meals cost about ten fifty, and that's including our social supports that we do as well, and then of course, we are subsidized somewhat by government funding. I believe that's about a third of our funding is federally subsidized. And then we'll talk specifically about Twalton.
So we actually serve about So we actually serve about 20 people in our dining room Tuesdays and Thursdays at the Tuolton Center. We serve about 25 people home-delivered, and they're getting delivered out of the Tigerd Center. So in addition to, so, so I guess if you think about it, we're delivering once a week. We used to deliver daily. You know, pandemic had us change our services, so we probably serve about 125 meals weekly to these 25 folks. In addition to just serving the meals, we also conserve presents at Christmas. You know, we partner with other agencies, and so we give them presents. We give them flowers. We had, who was it, AARP that gave us flowers for Valentine's Day? And poetry that comes from the Resource Center, and specialized cards that come from volunteers. So in fans, the summertime, of course, every single year, we are always delivering fans to those that need it. And so they also take advantage of the friendly chat program because, you know, they used to see us daily, and now they see us weekly. So some of them are lonely, and we are the only face that they see in, in the week. So at the Wanita Pole Center, there's other activities there, driver's ed classes, bingo fitness classes, field trips. We used to have like a congregation of 40 people, and it's, it's been about 20 for a while, but it's starting to grow. So we are seeing that across the board with our congregate dining centers, that they're starting to grow, which might potentially open us up for more days. And, and not only that, is the congregate that come to the Tuolton Center also go to the Tigerd Center on the off day. So that was kind of the idea, so that they can, you know, alternate locations to eat. Thank you guys for the grant that you're giving us and help us support our senior population.
Yes, some people, that is like their tradition of going to congregate. They have their, their table. They do their thing.
Oh, yeah.
I hate to say cute, because that feels diminutive, but it is very cute. I like them all just hanging out. So yeah, these are just some of our volunteer opportunities. As I said, we are very much powered by volunteers. We have meal delivery drivers, which is kind of what everyone knows us for of like the magnet slapped on the car. With that, that's also a chance to just check in and chat with our participants and just see what's going on, making sure that they're good. Because we, something we don't do is we don't leave the meal. We need to see, make sure the person is home, make sure that they're safe. So even if it is that, you know, two-minute check-in, it's something. And for some, as Angie mentioned, for some of our folks, that's the only interaction that they may get today. And then, of course, and then we also have congregated dining. We do the alternate. Just our model has very much changed in the past few years, so we've been doing two days, two alternative days at centers. But it also gives a chance, people to volunteer, do the serving, help, you know, just clean up around the centers, do some prepping for those that are doing, who are giving out the meals. And then, of course, friendly chats, as I talked about, for all of them, they're about an hour and a half. But for, the nice thing about friendly chats is you can do it on your own time. It's remote. It's when works for you. Of course, you're not calling someone at like Saturday night at 8:00 p.m. I don't think that's appropriate, but for the most part, it gives a little bit of flexibility in when you can volunteer and, and contribute your time. So yes, if you would like to volunteer, some information of how to become a volunteer. So yeah, that's our presentation, and any questions, I guess?
Questions, comments? Councilperson, councilperson.
It's just comments of how wonderful.
Well, no, actually, you guys are wonderful, and I just want to acknowledge, because I've gone and visited, and the care that you take specifically with the people in our community is very well-received and obvious when I go to chat with people over there. And I'm curious with the pandemic, was a lot of that loss of life, or are people nervous still that are more at risk? I'm just worried, I'm just wondering how many community members that we lost in that.
We, the numbers definitely changed in the pandemic, but we also changed our service model. Something we used to do was deliver meals every day. Well, and also one thing, the reason that our volunteer is ours, our Monday through Thursday, is because we don't work on Fridays. Yay for us. But that was doing that one day less a week. For our volunteers, or for the folks receiving meals during the height of the pandemic, it made more sense to do one day a week of getting meals delivered. And we alternate that if someone has whatever reason that they need them more often. And then same thing with congregate. I think folks are starting to come out more. There are some centers that definitely, people are feeling a little bit more comfortable, more willing to do it. But some people are just still staying at home, and we just try to accommodate as much as possible with what we can do.
I think that transportation is a big issue for some people. And then, of course, people are probably still nervous about, you know, illnesses out there too. But, you know, we're trying to draw in the crowd. We're doing cultural meals at the centers and trying to just bring back some of that, you know, special touch that we used to have. We used to have parties. We used to, you know, decorate and all those fun things. And we're trying to give that good atmosphere again with, you know, we have entertainment. Like at the Elsie Stewart Center, you know, we have people that entertain every lunch hour. And, you know, just having the community locations like Wanita Pole and Elsie Stewart opening up more of their activities is bringing more people too. So people will go play bingo and then eat lunch and do stuff like that. So that is helping the congregation grow.
I just want to thank you a lot, because I know you take a really special care of everybody that comes in, including me. And I'm also wondering if people know about like the ride connection, if the ride connection comes for that? And just so that people can get there if they're having trouble getting there, because we, we have that free ride resource here in the city.
Yeah, Ride Connection is actually where I used to work, so I am very, yes, I am a nonprofit aficionado. But that is something we do during intake, and of course, things can get lost as, you know, people have taken time away. But we definitely try as make it, try and bridge that gap for transportation as much as possible. But overall, it's just people being hesitant and just not, and those, for whatever reason, sometimes people just don't know about our services, or don't feel they're eligible, or feel that it costs money. I'm working on it. I'm trying. Our team is trying. Something we are doing is the cultural events, and that is we have a new cultural outreach manager, community outreach manager. And so we're going to all the centers of just kind of what, what is the demographic of the area they serve? And getting materials translated. Quite a few centers recently did a Asian heritage celebration, and that's something we just haven't done before. So we're working on it. We, you know, it's in the upswing. Thank you very much. Both of you. Thank you.
Oh, I just want to thank you for your work in the community. I actually, my neighbor was a recipient, or is a recipient of Meals on Wheels. And during the pandemic, she was super depressed. She's in her 80s. And, you know, I would try to say hi and visit her, but now that you guys are back, sort of, not like every day, but once a week, she, I can see her spirit a lot more lifted. And, and so I just want to thank you for that, because I just go and say hi, but she's, she's, she's an older 80-something-year-old woman by herself. And when you're back, when you became, you get back on your services, she was really happy to hear that. And also, I really think that in nonprofit, the way you reflect, your organization, it comes from the top. I think I have a lot of respect for Meals on Wheels and, and your, and your CEO. So I think that you can see how, how great you are, because you do have a great leader. So thank you for your community, for serving our community.
Thank you. Suzanne is awesome. This is, no one's denying that. And a lot of times, like I've subbed on routes, and people are like, where is Carol, or whoever their normal person is? And I'm like, Carol's just taking the week off. She'll be back. Like, I'm just here to substitute. But people like really have those connections with their, like their routine driver.
Another thing I was going to mention is during the pandemic, at the very beginning, all of our clients were able to go on to home delivery, because we were trying to keep them out of the public. So everybody that went on home delivery, not all of them have come back. They enjoy that convenience of getting their meals delivered rather than having to get up and go to the center. Because prior to that, we screened them, and only if they were physically unable to get out of their homes, we would give them Meals on Wheels. So now they kind of open that door, and a lot of people take advantage of that. In addition, we have some hybrid clients, which OAA, that funds us that 30%, they didn't want a hybrid client. They wanted either a congregate or a home delivery. So now we've kind of opened that door too, to where the seniors can come in and eat at the center, and then also get a home delivery. Or they can pick up meals at the center, you know, to take care of that gap of the meals that they used to have, so that they can have all that supplements, you know, the supplementation that they need throughout the week. So that is another reason that we aren't at our full numbers at the centers, is because a lot of them enjoy that convenience.
Home delivery, yeah.
And not only that, is that when we went to one, once a week delivery, most of the seniors loved it. They didn't want to have to, you know, work around our schedule to make their doctor appointments and stuff. So they, it was just unanimous across the board to keep it that way. So they do really enjoy that once a week.
Councilperson Pratt.
So if someone in our community, I know we have rides here in Tuolton, but if they want to go to Tigerd also, do you help them get access? I mean, we have limited bus service here. So do you help them with that as best you can?
It's more so connecting folks with the service, but we're, well, it's the staff, so.
Yeah, no, I understand.
We just offer the resources. We don't have anything to do specifically with, you know, you know, setting up ride to care or any of that. We just have to give them the resources so that they can make their own plan to get to the center.
And then on top of the food, I mean, you've, you've stated it several times, but that connection with seniors is so important. And you've talked about volunteering, and it was before COVID, but I went to one of those meals at the Wanita Pole Center, and every person I talked to had an amazing story. So I think as a volunteer, it's a great opportunity too.
It is fun. It's truly fun.
Councilor.
Thank you. Just quickly, I remember, I guess, pre-pandemic times, doing the fundraiser walk up at PIR. Is that right? Is that still happening, and is that something we can get involved in?
Right now, we're, we do still have some annual fundraisers. More so, we have like Donate Dinner, which is something that we do in, around Thanksgiving, so early November. And that happens around the city, where we basically have door greeters and the New Seasons and other stores, just saying, hey, July, so donate some new, to Meals on Wheels people. And then that's, that's kind of it. So if people don't want to engage, they don't have to. And then we have Waterfront Blues Festival, which is coming up in July. So we do have some annual fundraisers as well, and we have a new development director that's just kind of figuring out what she wants to do with all the events and everything.
Well, do you, for the waterfront event, do you partner with Oregon Food Bank on that, or is it Meals on Wheels only?
It's Meals on Wheels, and then there is a local, I don't know if charity is the right word, so don't quote me out. This isn't recording. A partner organization is Jeremy Wells Foundation that we work with for the Blues Fest. And that's, we've done that many years.
Other questions?
Thank you very much for what you do for our community. I was going to ask the question, how can one give, just to get it out there again?
Yes, thank you. Appreciate that. We have, you can always donate at a center. I think our, our finance team, though, would prefer online giving donations. And then we have, we have what's called a Sustainer Circle, which is basically just an annual give, or monthly giving that you can do as well. And yeah, so I would, I would definitely say online is the best bet, but we'll, we'll take it in person. We'll make it happen.
Anything else? The only comment I have is I get the direct email pieces for fundraising from Meals on Wheels, which we always respond to. And I've always enjoyed the New Seasons fundraisers, because, I mean, people walk in and New Seasons really gets jazzed. All the store, you know, checkout clerks are ringing the bells and stuff like that, doing the woo-woo's and stuff like that. Every time someone, you know, to have, they're still going, or no?
Yes, that's the week before Thanksgiving. But the one out here in Tuolton, actually, that New Seasons, not last year, but the year before, they were the top, the top one for us. You know, and they did, they had the whole bell going.
It was going crazy.
They were very serious about it.
Yeah, it was awesome. I was managing the Tigerd Center at that time, and so I was a part of that, you know, keeping an eye on that campaign at that time, so.
And did they still do, I know they, it rotates, because when, for NNC, they did it, the five cents a bag thing in New Seasons? That they donated that money, they used to do that, but that was pre-buyout, maybe, but.
I don't remember that. I know during Donate Dinner, we'll also have, we'll often have where certain wines that you buy, they, some proceeds will go there. Just throwing that out there.
One more is that we have, we make our own popcorn. So if you ever see PDx Pop in the New Seasons, I think, in some of those.
Market of Choice.
Okay, yeah, Market of Choice. That is made at our Resource Center over there in Multnomah Village. And there's lots of different flavors, and it's very good, and it's one of our fundraisers, so try a bag sometime.
We eat a lot of popcorn at the main office, a lot. And then we get, for our birthdays, they do like a little care package, and I'm like, I can't eat anymore, so I send it to my, my mom back home. And that's what they look forward to. They're like, Adam, you just had a birthday, so I know you got a care package. So it's very tasty.
Thank you both very much for coming tonight and letting us know what's going on. Meals on Wheels does terrific work. Like again, pre-pandemic, I used to go, you know, join in at the facility at Wanita Pole. Not as much since, but I'll be back. But I do know folks do it. I've told this story before. A member of the American Legion, was an American Legion in Tigerd, and an older veteran couple said how they did go between both the centers. And when it was closed for a little while in Tigerd, they very much missed it. But it's great to hear both centers are back open, and that they can get meals, you know, all week long.
Yes, yes.
Well, thanks for coming again.
We appreciate it. Thank you so much.
All right. That brings us to special report number three, waiting patiently to Tuolton TVFNR, Chief Olvin. Oh, I'm going to have, because they might skip if they get a call. Yes, because I hate to wait, and all of a sudden you guys get a call, boom, you're gone, because I was all by yourself.
I was amazed that it hadn't happened so far. So in the audience, I have Chief Smith with me, and then Lieutenant Childers and the Tuolton firefighters from Station 34. So thank you for all of them for being here, and we'll try to get through this quickly, as I know that you have other business to cover. And I also want to express regrets that Chief Weiss couldn't be here. But we'll kick it off with a year in review video that he recorded for us. We'll see if this works.
Hi, my name's Derek Weiss, and I'm the fire chief for Tuolton Valley Fire and Rescue. It's a busy place. Here are just a few of the highlights from this year from our paramedics, firefighters, and support staff that keep our community safe.
They're being dispatched out of the same 911 center. We can see where those private ambulance units are. There's better communication. And so we're pleased that we aren't in the same position as we likely lamented to you last year. Also, in EMS, House Bill 4081 passed. That was the only legislation that our board endorsed. And it's intended to modernize the EMS system because much like the Washington County franchise system, there's been a long time since things have been looked at to see if they're still relevant. And then in our area, you've probably heard us talk in the past about high utilizers. So we have some folks in our system, whether or not they have chronic underlying health issues, or they have substance use disorder, or there's mental health issues, where they call 911 a whole lot. We have 99 patients that call at least 10 times per year, call 911. And then we have some people that will call hundreds of times per year. So when that happens, that takes that frontline resource out of service. Our community paramedic program that we're piloting right now aims to go see these folks in advance and see if they have needs to try to connect them with social services so that instead of using the 911 system for some of those needs, they're getting better care, better resources without it impacting the reliability of the 911 system. So we're hopeful that that will continue to yield. We have some funding limitations on that now. But that leads me to almost our last item. I'll talk about our levy and some of the aspirations that we have if that levy passes. Just before that, I'll talk about the bond update. In 2021, voters approved a bond for us that's aimed for capital infrastructure. This didn't have any cost because we, it was cost neutral because we retired debt that we previously had. But we have purchased apparatus with that. And then our training facility, for those of you who have participated in our community academy know, we haven't updated it in decades. And so we really, especially with all the recruit academies, we'll be doing with three per year as 67% of our workforce can retire in the next five years. We have a lot of folks to get in the system, right? To do the work. And so our update for our training center, Recruit Village, we're modeling it after PGE, which isn't far from here. They have a training center to try to have more covered areas as we continue to experience climate change and need to train indoors, better amenities for our recruit firefighters and paramedics. And this is really the bulk of our bond program focus that we'll have over the next three years. And our board just approved a, the first contract for development of that. We're going to use some things like the containers, like shipping containers that you've seen that have been adapted for buildings. We're going to use those. So it'll be pretty exciting to see how that shapes up. Lastly, we do have a funding measure on the May ballot. On May 21st, that will be decided by voters. We have had levies in place since 2000. After ballot measure 47 and 50, we have had a reliance on levies for staffing. It's primarily funded our frontline firefighters. Our current levy funds at least 92 of our firefighters and paramedics, as well as some of our support staff. The replacement levy that's on the ballot will maintain the funding for those firefighters, and if passed, will add up to 36 more. And that again goes back to what you saw with the increase in our emergency incidents annually, what we expect to be in the future. If it's approved, we think that we'll be able to maintain that rate for a decade, and that provides us the ability to plan for the future. And as you know, levies are temporary. They're only good for five years. Also, if the levy passes, that we will be able to invest in vehicles used to fight wildfires and to help transport patients, medical units that we have, medical equipment like defibrillators, the breathing apparatus that firefighters wear into burning buildings, thermal imagers that make images out of heat and not light when we're in smoky environments as well. So if it does not pass, we have one more year before our current levy expires. And so we would go back out next May. We would learn why it didn't pass. We appreciate the fact that people have experienced all the things that we all have with inflation and other things. So we aren't taking anything for granted and just trying to get the word out about what would happen. If it didn't pass both times, we would have to significantly reduce our frontline staffing and others. I did mention before the community paramedicine program. So if the levy passes, we will invest more in risk reduction programs that aim to intervene on the types of calls that could be prevented altogether or could be substantially mitigated by doing those proactive outreach with our paramedics. So I feel like I've gone on and on and on. And I know it's at the end of your evening. So with that, I'll welcome any questions. And I'd just like to say thank you. Mayor Rubinek and I go way back 20 years from Towalton tomorrow. I had coffee this morning with Candace Kelly, one of my dearest friends. And I've always felt very connected to this community. And I'm grateful for all the partnerships that we have with all of you. So with that, any questions?
Questions for the chief. Council Hillier.
Thank you very much. That was talk about top notch presentation and energy. Thank you for being here. And I just wanted to also say thank you for sharing Doreen with us. There's an organization I'm involved with that Candace Kelly has been very active with and part of the Safety Town, bringing Safety Town back to Towalton. So we're excited to have your folks come and teach our little people, incoming kindergartners and maybe first graders. And so, and I also wanted to say thank you for sharing Jacob. He just does an exceptional job. I have coffee with him about once a quarter. And so I just appreciate all you do and look forward to seeing you out in the future, I guess, because hopefully not at my house.
Yes, thank you.
Or on my street or anything like that.
Very fair. Thank you so much.
Council Sacco.
Thank you for the presentation. I just wanted to, you mentioned the community, the community academy. And I just wanted to plug that. And if anybody hasn't participated, I highly recommend it. I think, I think it was two years ago that I went. But I mean, it's left a lasting impression on me. I mean, the whole experience was, was really life changing to see how these, how these individuals participate and show up in our community. I got to go home and go to sleep after a really busy night. And a lot of the folks had, like, they were going out and volunteering the next day. We got no sleep. I don't know how many calls we went on. So it's just really amazing that, I mean, their work goes beyond just their job in our community, which is really amazing to see.
Thank you so much. I agree. We'll do one this fall. So we will be soliciting those of you who have not done it yet to see if you want to participate.
Other questions or comments? Council Brooks.
Thank you for your presentation. I had one, I had a couple of questions. One was, well, I'd love to hear more about how the community resource piece works after this year of piloting it and just see what kind of results happen. Sounds really interesting and exciting. One of the first touches I had with the fire department was to go out to the women's training academy and experience watching people go up ladders that I would never go up and jumping through windows and all the stuff. And I was just curious about the numbers of women joining locally. It's nice to see you here. And just curious if you have any information about that?
Sure. So I started with TVFNR as an intern 26 years ago. And at that time, there were 3% women. Now we're closer to 11%. So that's improving considerably. But that Portland Metro Fire Camp that you mentioned, for those of you that haven't heard about it, it's something Portland Fire and Rescue started, but we have joined them for the last six years. And it's for young women between the ages of 15 and 21 to get exposure to it so that they can see that you can do things. There's a lot of techniques. You don't just have to be big and tall. Helps, don't get me wrong. It's way easier for Chief Smith to throw a ladder than me. But it is, there are a lot of barriers just by virtue of not seeing people that look like you to feel like you can be part of something. And we've hired our first firefighter that had originally gone through the Portland Metro Fire Camp. And it's, it's expanding the horizon of young women to see that they can be part of something. So we, we clearly still have work to do. But I'm pleased that a lot of the attitudes, that it isn't a field that women or any, but you know, any diverse person can join, we're breaking those down. And we want to better reflect the communities that we serve. So we're hopeful. And we have really good advocates out there. It's so fun. It's a three day camp run by all female firefighters. And when you're there on day one, they're just really timid. And it's, you know, you can just feel the anxiety and the nervousness. And by day three, they're little bad A's. They're just, they're tough and they're chanting and they're throwing ladders. And the empowerment that occurs, even if they don't choose to become professional firefighters, is palpable.
Yeah, that was very inspiring. And I think that, you know, I was thinking, wow, this would be an, would have been an interesting thing to do a long time ago. But if somebody is that age, 15 to 21, like, it is a really good time, especially if you're physically adept and all that. And then my other question was, you mentioned about the effects of climate change. And I'm just wondering how you forecast and what kind of things that you do to, to be more anticipatory and proactive around that conversation? What kind of impacts you think it looks like? And, and, you know, if, if, of course, if like the levies go through and things like that, how are you strategic around that conversation? Because it's really changed the dynamic here and it's something that we think about with our climate action plan.
Absolutely. So we take our, our cues, not only from what we know anecdotally from the data, but also the state with their climatologists, their meteorologists to help us anticipate the risk profile. But where we locate our resources, like the water tenders that carry a whole bunch of water, right? That can shuttle water to areas that don't have fire hydrants? How many of those we have? We want to increase the number of those that we have if the levy passes. Where we locate them so we get them there fastest when we have fires that occur in the interface, right? Between, which we have interface right here. Stafford is Wildland Urban Interface, right? We have a lot of areas where you have a lot of vegetation, you have a lot of brush, and you see increasing risk. Chehalis Mountain, you might recall, right? In 2020, that was really significant. Well, and we saw statewide, right? Huge fires and a complete town loss. And so I think that we've increased the number of, or the amount of training that we do for Wildland firefighting, which is different. We have a Wildland firefighting team that not only helps train our folks here, but can get deployed elsewhere in the state and beyond if we get requests from partner states. And then they bring that knowledge back to us. And we try to do prevention with our communities to help people create defensible space because sometimes in a wildfire setting, how well you've created a defensible space might mean whether or not you get fire protection based on the limited structural fire protection crews that are deployed during wildfires. So we still have more to do, undoubtedly. But Chehalis Mountain was an example. And we were already, our system, because of the windstorm and the other events, we were already pretty maxed. I remember I was heading home from being at the Fire Operations Center for 24 hours and the first smoke came out and the first call to 911 came and I got rerouted there. And then I'm in a parking lot with the sheriff's office doing evacuations because it was so dramatically changing. And I, because of the firefighting effort and probably a good dose of luck, no homes were lost, no, no one was injured, no animals were injured. And that was a really challenging fire. So, but I, I don't think that we would be immune should we face a similar scenario with that regional event that, from having issues. We have been working with PGE, who has made considerable strides in their public safety shut off program to proactively shut things off. And they've really improved that. That for us is great if we know that we're going to have a wind event. We, we heard some feedback from the community that was concerned about the lack of power, right? During that. And we know people are often dependent on power. But our response to that is a few days of inconvenience without power is better than experiencing what people who've lost their homes or entire communities in wildfires, where you have years of impact and devastation. So, so we're partnering. We have an emergency manager who's at the forefront of our planning. We're participating right now in the update of the Clackamas County wildfire mitigation plan. That was just done in, in Washington and Multnomah Counties. I think we're due in Yamhill County so that everybody's on the same page about what we do and how we do it when we have those catastrophic events.
Thank you very much. And I had one more, I'm sorry guys, but I, I also think about the, the health interface very much. And I appreciate you talking about that. And I'm just wondering, I know I have friends of mine that are still retiring, that are nurses and stuff, just from the burnout from COVID. And I imagine you guys too with heat related things too and, and health. And I'm just curious if there's any, those retirement numbers are impacted by some of these crises that we've just come through?
We saw some people retire earlier than they planned during the pandemic. For, for those of you that watched those calls, right? We were in full Tyvek suits. We didn't know the extent of the exposure. We didn't want to be infecting others, vectors, if you will, as we were responding from call to call. It's extremely stressful to be in emergency response anyway. Now put on a Tyvek suit and have a pandemic that you don't know, right? How, how life threatening it is. So some folks that were at the end of their career, that were due to retire, moved up that retirement date. So that did shift our plans. And frankly, mental health is an issue, right? That has impacted, impacts responders and clinical workers in the hospital setting and other things. I am very, very proud to say that Chief Weiss has had this as a priority. Chief Smith, interestingly enough, is one of the people that is helping with some of our mental health initiatives. Because when Chief Smith and I first started in the fire service, it was not cool to talk about things. It was more of like this tough bravado and just stuffing everything down, which over time is extremely unhealthy and creates all kinds of other issues and can impact your ability to do the best job possible for the people that you serve. We're a lot better now at recognizing that. We have a peer support system. We have a, we have mental health clinicians that work on staff to help us. We have a ton of employee assistance programs. We're looking to implement a program called Struggle Well, which helps people contend with some of that traumat, post-traumatic stress. So I don't know if I'm straying a bit from your, your question, but, but we, we, we do, this is a place where the fire chief has had a lot of energy and is trying to prioritize our investments, both for our, you know, to make sure our personnel are doing the best job and then to help with what we're seeing, you know, as far as a mental health crisis in our region.
Thank you very much. I know it's really hard work and I really appreciate all of the service and the work that you all do. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Anything else? Council President Pratt.
I'll, I'll try to be quick here, but I, I got the wonderful opportunity to be part of the community academy this last year. And it was, it was one of the most amazing experiences I've ever had. First of all, it was a ton of fun to use the jobs of life and probably that, and tear that car apart. It was a blast and drive the fire truck. But, you know, I, I, I was so amazed at how this group of people, it's like three in the morning, they get called out, everybody gets in the fire truck. And then like the second they get there, they're on and they're a team and they're doing their, it was, I just can't believe how quickly everybody just like snapped to and did their job and did what was best for the people they were helping. It was, it was amazing. And the other thing I really learned that, I don't know why I didn't realize this before, but that, that you're such an essential service to the, the most vulnerable people in these assisted living centers. And like, I don't know what we'd do without you out there to help us. So thank you for, to everybody for your service.
Thank you so much. Since you participated in the community academy, we've gotten some feedback about our cardiac arrest survivability rates, which I think you've, any of you that have been in the community academy have heard about. And this is an area that we've been trying to focus on, that pit crew that you got to observe, right? Where everybody, we're really trying to finesse the way that we respond. We actually increased how many people are dispatched to cardiac, potential cardiac arrest calls. And we just found out that our survival rate for people who have cardiac arrest, that have a shockable rhythm, right? When it's observed by someone is 45.1%. So we are now at the top of the nation as far as cardiac arrest survivability. And that kind of goes back to what you're saying. We really try to make sure that that crew competency is in effect so that regardless of how tired and how many calls, you, everybody knows their role and we can effectively do it during those calls when someone's basically dead and we can potentially revive them. So we're really happy about that. Thank you for participating in this. You can see it.
Anything else? Well, thank you for coming out.
Hey, thanks so much. I appreciate you.
All right. That brings us to the annual report of the Towalton Arts Advisory Committee. Thank you for being patient.
Good evening, Mayor Rubinek and Council. I am still Julie Ludeman, Recreation Manager. And I am pleased to be here tonight with Janet Stagger Carr, our Towalton Arts Advisory Committee Chair. And I'm going to turn the presentation over to Janet.
And Julie and I have a lot of experience with this dog and pony show that we call the Towalton Arts Advisory Committee. All right. Who are we? I had the privilege of writing the first paragraph, so I will just let it be read by your own eyes. When we get to the bottom, I will say that we believe that art itself facilitates strong communities through connection, culture, creativity, imagination, and inspiration. And we had that tested this year with the Veterans Service Art Plaza that we got to facilitate. It was fabulous. The art piece that you see there is by Portland artist, Arvy Smith. It was commissioned or acquired in 2001 for the Visual Chronicles, and it now resides in the police training room. Please, if you haven't seen it, go take a look. He is a nationally recognized Portland artist, and that piece is absolutely magnificent in person. All right. Our current members. Well, we have Brett there, we have Dawn, we have Mason and Kathleen. Jeanne Hart is not photographed. Reeve is not there, but we do have our wonderful council liaison, Bridgette Brooks. Without you, we could not do our work anywhere near what we're able to do. Who else are we? Oh, and we have Julie and we have Ross. Without the two of them, our work would be miniscule. What we do. Well, aside from looking at Janine Miller's wonderful Towalton cows, which I just think is wonderful. And Janine Miller was a, an art teacher at Towalton High School. You may know that. We are so lucky to have so many pieces in our inventory. We have monthly meetings. We represent the Towalton Arts to the council and to the public. We attend activities and events whenever we can. We encourage opportunities for arts recognition as much as possible. And we stimulate private and public support for the art. Our 2023 accomplishments. One of them, that wasn't 2023, was it Julie? The signal wrap box.
It was calendar, calendar year 23, yes.
It was? Okay. Well, there you go. There's an art signal wrap box, piece of artwork that's over to the side. Oh, I'm sorry, that one.
That, that one was not.
That was, that was at the tail end of COVID. I remember, I remember when that went up. That was like a "huh" moment when I drove past it with the sun coming out. It was just gorgeous. But in 2023, we did three signal box art wrap installations. That was just prior to getting down and in the weeds with the veterans' art that we ended up having to do. We did financial support to arts agencies. We had a community enhancement award. That doesn't always happen every year, but this year, 2023, it did. We had the Veterans Plaza Service Inspired Art Selection Process. Woo, that's a mouthful. And we also did a loan of art to the Towalton Heritage Center for a public show. That is a piece of my heart. I have wanted to have the Heritage Center as an art exhibit place for years. And when we did the inventory, when the art got moved and we were looking at all the pieces, my brain said, we have to get some of this out there. So I went to Rick Wheelock, the manager of the center, and said, how can we do this? How can we make it happen? We asked the arts committee to please vote to allow the loan. They did. And by golly, we made that art happen. If you haven't been into the Heritage Center and seen the piece that is still on the back wall, it just is absolutely magnificent, in my opinion. These are the three traffic signal box wraps we did in 2023. We, as a committee, decided we wanted to do something a little bit more whimsical. These pieces were not designed for an older population. They were a little bit more whimsical for our kids. We put them in locations that would be a little bit more accessible for viewing to the three elementary schools. And the first one, Serapee, Julie and I got together with the artist and asked for it to be a little bit more vibrant than the original artwork had been. It was a little more southwestern in flavor. We wanted some more of the blue touches for our community. So hopefully as you're driving by, it's, it pops out. The one in the center, bigger yet. We did some changes with that. We asked the artist to please change the cloth on the astronaut's chest from blood red to purple. And there was one other change, but I'm not remembering exactly what that was. But that is a piece that talks to the gamers, if you would. So it's not necessarily meant for some of the older generations. It speaks to some of our younger kiddos. My favorite, Space Whale. Oh, I love that piece. I love to think about the school buses driving by, seeing it from each side, the imagination, the whimsicality. It's my favorite. Sorry, I shouldn't have a favorite, but I do. We also participate in arts agency support grants. This year, it was Mask and Mirror. Hopefully, some of you have been to the Heritage Center and seen some of their unmasked performances. We have also given our grant to SNA Irish Entertainment, which is at the Grange. They do a fabulous job there. We had our community enhancement award. I apologize for not being here. My shingles vaccine felled me big time. But I am so glad that I was, had representation here. And we honored Angela Rats, longtime Towalton resident artist and educator. I cross paths with her in the Heritage Center all the time. And word on the street was she had her daughter here and it was an absolutely fabulous presentation. And she was so honored, moved to tears with that. So we're glad that we were able to facilitate that. Next up, big time, Veterans Plaza Service Inspired Art. I didn't really realize until I went back and looked at this list just what a process it was that we had gone through and, and facilitated, March to May 2023. We created with our amazing consultants, the request for qualifications. It went out nationwide. It was so clear, so professional, so inviting to artists that during August and September of 2023, we reviewed 43 artists submissions nationwide. Our little community here, 43 nationwide artists of just magnificent caliber we got here. It's just incredible. In September of 2023, we selected the five semifinalists. The process for narrowing down those 43 to five was amazing. I was honored to be able to be a part of that with the selection committee and the rest of my arts committee. Correct me if I'm wrong, but we, we were very, very fair and equitable. And across the board, the five candidates that we chose were everyone's choice, everyone's favorite. There was not a contentious bone in anybody's body when we came to those five. The reason it was five- The reason it was five, we have the two commissions. The reason that it was five, you've, you've already been told this. I apologize for being redundant. But we had one artist who had submitted for both of the commissions. He was chosen to do the presentation for both of the commissions. So, that's why there were five. And then obviously, in February twenty twenty-four, we had a semifinalist presentations and final artist selection. In twenty twenty-four, our goals are to install, well, we're not going to install it. We're going to have it installed. It will be installed. Veterans Plaza Public Art, although, yeah, twenty-four, twenty-five?
Well, yeah, okay.
Yeah, twenty-five.
Tw- we're, this is one of our goals then. We want to identify future arts programs and projects. We want to continue to support local arts programming through grants and awards. And we want to support and facilitate arts installations within new parks bond projects. That's something that we look forward to looking into in this year now that we've got the veterans' artwork sort of consolidated, so. That's who we are. That's my phenomenal committee that I absolutely adore and our team with the Parks People, so. Thank you.
Questions, comments? Council Brooks?
I just want to thank Janet for being a great chair. It's kind of funny because we had the same chair buck for like thirty years. So, even though you've been chairing now for years, it still feels like you're new, sort of, but not really. And the effort that I know that you take to meet, not only on this really extensive project, but to help with really great expertise around like the RFP, which was so successful. And I know that you take time and meet with Julie around the arts committee on your own and that you have like a very strong dedication to moving this committee forward in its work and also making sure that everyone's heard in a really fair and safe way. Is, it's just not lost on me. So, I just really appreciate your efforts in your volunteerism and the efforts of, of course, all the people on the arts committee and how well they work with the, the other committees that they interface with. Thanks.
Comments, questions?
I just want to say Space Whale's my favorite, too.
I know, I know. I think that's one that sort of pivoted us into like, oh, this needs to go by a school. We want the kids driving by and the buses and everything to see it, so, you know. Not that, not your typical, I mean, the others are gorgeous. And our, and our, the, our bee that'll be going back up, you know, is, is absolutely gorgeous, too. But it was that, that whimsicality, that we're doing this for the kids, you know, to let them have their little moment of art. Thank you, thank you.
I just want to say how proud I am of the community and, and people like you. I sit on the committee to select committee members and it's just, I mean, we get the most wonderful people on, I mean, artists, accountants, just professionals and people with lots of experience, live, life experience. And just seeing that to flourish is just amazing. Like, from the moment we select someone and then, or continue, we, we, you know, look at them and, and we talk to them and they're just so great to see the work. It's just, I don't know, it's amazing. It makes me very proud of our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? I just want to thank you for your enthusiasm, your leadership. You've got some longtime members in that committee. Back before, Council Brooks, I was still Ca- Council Liaison when I was still a counselor. So, I know the amount of time it takes and the enthusiasm and the love of the folks that are on that committee. So, thank you for serving and helping our community through this process of selecting the veteran art.
Oh, that's our honor. That's just our honor.
And I want to thank Julie for the work on this. And I forgot to say, thank you for chaperoning the kids at NLC. Always, you know, always a fun. Yeah, racing us between buildings and we just missed it. But pretty much appreciate your help on both the YAC and the Library Committee.
Absolutely.
My library, our committee, sorry.
I'll take credit for it.
You're crazy, you all. All right. Well, thank you and thank you for your patience tonight. I'm surprised that the firefighters didn't pull out sooner, too. But I wanted to, I was hoping they would make it through the whole thing, but never happens.
It's what happens.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Uh, let's see. So, that brings us to items removed consent. We didn't have any. So, that gives us to Council Communications. We didn't do our usual roundtable during work, work sessions. So, we'll go ahead and do that now. And I'll start off to my left with Council Gonzalez.
I don't have anything new to report this time.
Council Brooks?
Well, happy April and it's nice to join you all in the rapture and the, the eclipse. And I just wanted to say, the only thing that I'm reporting on this week is, I won't be, unfortunately, won't be able to be in person at the State of the City, but I had the pleasure of going over to the, the studio and recording a little conversation with our mayor, who I think really enjoys filming and, and practicing Spanish. And, and so, that, that was a really great opportunity to be able to be involved. So, I appreciate it because I had a vacation already scheduled and I'll, I'll be really sorry to miss it, but I'm glad to be able to participate in this way. So, thanks for setting it up. And then I will have some meetings this week coming up. The, both the executive meeting for the Regional Water Providers Consortium will be the, coming this week and the PAB meeting will be coming this week. And I also just want to thank our city manager for sending the article about the work that Washington County has done with the Metro Housing Grant. I hope that everybody had a chance to take a look at it. If you haven't yet, please do. And, you know, it talks about the fact that all the encampments in Washington County are gone and people have been placed into housing. The voucher program for prevention has been working really well. And I just think that, you know, a lot of times people focus on how government doesn't work. And when we look at what we can do with good leadership and the way that the county has, Washington County in particular, has tackled this and that it's a very interesting innovation nationally, doing these three counties partnering together for a bond, like a regional bond like this, is, it's just, I'm really proud to have worked on that and want to continue to work on positive things. And anyway, that's my story and I'm sticking to it. Thanks.
Council Sacco?
Thank you. On April fifth, the Subcommittee on Council Rules met. I think we had a good first discussion. We didn't make it through all the rules, but our city attorney is going to come back with some suggestions based on our conversations. Just wanted to thank Council, Councilor Hillier and Gonzalez for our partnership together on that subcommittee and looking forward to seeing the outcome of that. And then on April eighth, which was earlier today, we interviewed some lobbyist firms. We had some good candidates and really looking forward to seeing what a lobbyist firm can do for our city. It's very exciting. That's it.
Council Hillier?
Thank you. I attended the meeting as Counselor Sacco indicated. And I, too, am looking forward to that work. And I would just put out there to the community that there is the Dress to Dream event happening Friday afternoon and all day Saturday, nine to three, at Roland Hills Community Church for any student wanting to attend prom. It's for regional, because I know there's millions of people listening and so from every school district around the Tri-County area. So, anyway, check that out, Dress to Dream. Thanks.
Council Reyes?
I'm nothing official to report. May I ask a question to Counselor Hillier about the Dress of Dreams? Is that, is that to donate stuff or, because I remember you had something about donating fur?
We, we take donations of dresses, shoes, suits, ties.
So, it is that?
It is that. And then this is the time, yep, this is when people, the students come and pick, pick through things. Like, so we have volunteers who spend hours and hours setting up all the things. It looks like this beautiful boutique and they come in and shop for free.
Can I still donate or?
Oh, please, yeah, please. Please, you have great taste. We would love to have anything that you might have.
Thank you, that's all.
Council President Pratt?
I attended the R1 Act meeting, which is the Region One area commu- I don't know what the transportation, anyway.
ODOT.
It's the ODOT committee representing this region. And we talked about, they talked about the huge funding gap for service, safety, the Rose Quarter and I-205 projects and shortages, so. And then the need for future revenues beyond what we have now is gas tax, the DMV fees and motor carrier fees. And on their options list, they included road uses charge, which is also what you, vehicle miles tax, funds from the general funds, which thirty-two other states do get general funds. And I actually figured it out and the average is six percent and that would be seven point two billion dollars of our general funds, which I'm sure there's other needs for, but that would certainly cover our needs for roads. And of course, they left tolling on one of their little boxes as an option, so. And there was discussion about the fact that gas taxes are split where the state gets fifty percent, counties get thirty, and then the cities get twenty percent. And that was met with silence from ODOT, so we'll keep pushing on that one with the mayor. I'm sure will help me with that one, too. And then the Clackamas County Coordinating Committee, we got a presentation from Triment on the, they're called stiff funds and that's the, that payroll tax that now comes out for transportation. And what came out of that was that ninety percent of those funds, they say, stay in the community. Where it's, but it's where it's collected, so it's where your employer. So, for instance, with me, that stays in Portland, even though I work part-time in Tuolotin. But those, they're not looking, they didn't have a real answer for if they're even looking at where people are traveling from. So, to me, it seems like if ninety percent of them are seeing where they're collected, it's just staying in employment centers and they're not really looking to where people are coming from. So, I hope they'll kind of take that into perspective at some point. Oh, and then lastly, yeah, we went to the, do our recording. I came after the mayor and Counselor Brooks and I was told to remind the mayor that it's Parquet, not Parque Margarita.
Don't, that's me, Counsel Brooks started that. All right. It was kind of a light two weeks for me with the spring break. Yeah, the State of the City filming was a lot of fun. The TV, TBC TV folks are terrific, super patient. Want to thank Counsel Brooks for spending, you know, time doing it because it's kind of hard to me, have a natural-looking conversation when there's a teleprompter screaming by you. But she did a terrific job making it look natural. She was doing it, she was nailing it at the end, so very nice job. The MMC meeting was later that day, the Metro Mayor's Consortium. It was another wrap-up of the last session. And then, you know, the session ends and we're already starting with a new session that Thorn Run gave us the full legislative schedule between now and the new session. And it's already packed full of milestones you've got to make if you want to get anything done in a twenty-five legislative session. So, we'll be looking at that and seeing what we need to do there. And then later that afternoon was the Small Cities Consortium. And Ajay Date, I'm sorry, Ajay Dale, from the Vice President of Marketing from Travel Portland, did a briefing on how cities can better market themselves. One, in terms of tourism, but also to site selectors. And there's a lot of overlap on, you know, focus what you're good at, you know, stick to a minimum kind of things and what makes you unique. And one of the things he pointed out that makes Tuolotin unique, of course, is the pumpkin regatta. And that it's not just a tourism thing, it's also a thing where a company might pick up on that because it's seen as a fun, innovative city that people would want to live in and what's around it. So, it triggered my head a little bit about, you know, we, we do a terrific job of the tourism part, but when we get into a point where we're trying to lure a company is don't try to be everything to everyone. Instead, just be very specific and sell what's unique about you and something, it's going to be all emotional. Find out that emotion that that site selector has with the company or their values and see if that's what's in your community and that's what you sell. Don't just throw them a whole bunch of statistics. They can get that anywhere. What makes you special to them and what will touch them that they want to move their company to you? Pretty good. On Saturday, I went to the Arbor Day Tree Planting. It was a lot of fun. I want to thank PG and Maria Pope and her folks for being there and Friends of Trees for running it. We planted twenty varieties of pollinators. So, it was on the backside of Atulati Park, so you really have to walk back there. And they're doing it in hedgerows, so the bees will come back to Atulati. This is back where two oh five is. We also planted a three hundred pound sequoia, I think Tom said it was. It'll eventually be a couple hundred feet tall, about sixty feet wide. If you take the path all the way down the hill in Atulati, you will come to it. It's in this little circle where it's all by itself and there's a bench there. So, just picture in years, you've got this tremendous tree with a bench under it with terrific shade. And it's pull, it's going to be a tree that lasts a couple hundred years. So, learned a lot from the Parks folks about the arboretum. That's in the back part of Atulati, never knew about that. Learned a lot about that. And Tom and his group were terrific, especially when he had to, we had to dig the hole, but they had to get the three hundred pound thing in the hole that day. But it was a lot of fun. And then again, the Council, Council Sacco said, want to thank Sherilyn and Megan for arranging the interviews today. We're going to get our scoring sheets into Megan by tomorrow. And another one who's, I'm going to circle back on, on the State of the City filming between Megan and Betsy. Betsy wants executive director credits on that video.
She deserves it.
She, she worked us. So, but she was terrific and very much a lot of fun filming that with her there. But that's it for me. Anything else from anyone else? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
To what?
Adjourned, second.
Motion second adjourned. All the favors say aye, opposed, abstentions? Have a good night. Thank you for joining us tonight.